To the City of Ansonia's Public Hearing. This meeting will also incorporate a Board of Aldermen meeting and a Board of Taxation meeting. We're going to begin with a presentation, then move into the public hearing where we'll take comment from anyone who's on the line via Zoom or telephone, and then we'll go into the Board of Aldermen in both meetings. We're going to begin things with a presentation, and everyone should be able to see the screen and the PowerPoint presentation in front of you. So we're here to talk about a bonding proposal for 2020, and materials have been published online, but of course, this is the first time that we've talked in detail about what the proposal represents, and we're eager to put it out there not only to our officials, but of course, the public, and then start to hear your comments tonight. So of course, there are four items. 3.1 million for the new police station project at 65 Main Street. Second item is 1.5 million for road and infrastructure improvements. The third is 300,000 for firefighter improvements, and 100,000 for recreational fields and facility study. And of course, a big topic is, why have this discussion now? We are of course, in the middle of the COVID-19 health crisis. It's a little awkward to make a presentation like this, of course, but we feel strongly that the delays created by this crisis have already cost us time in considering and discussing a proposal that really the city wanted to roll out in March and April. And we're worried that if we don't start the process now, this crisis could push us later and later and limit our options. After consultation with our bond counsel, Joseph Fazi, we've decided that really, at least the public hearing portion of this needs to go forward so we could start this discussion with the public and city officials, and we could avoid any delay of, again, any options that we want to pursue regarding the borrowing. And the big point is that we are very concerned that if we don't start the process, the delays may cause a significant financial loss to the city, or at the very least jeopardize an opportunity that we have in front of us. Also, interest rate, interest rates right now make borrowing attractive, as you'll hear a little bit later from our financial experts. The city's low debt profile makes additional borrowing attractive, and we've tried very hard working with finance and our advisors and bond counsel to structure a proposal that would add no additional budget impact to the taxpayers. You're going to hear about the possibility of premiums and also amortization of our existing debt that's rolling off to put us in a position where we don't have to increase costs in the budget. So if you're worried about a millerate impact, our goal is to avoid that now and avoid that going forward. And of course, also avoid an impact, a negative impact to our credit rating. Now dive right into these additional, these additional borrowing requests, starting with the largest one, which is 3.1 million for the new police station project under construction on Main Street. And of course, that's 65 Main Street. By way of background, this project initially began when the voters approved $12 million in funding to be borrowed with plans to create a police station project in Olson Drive. What we basically, what we can consider to be the core project. The project subsequently changed to 65 Main Street, an existing building that was the headquarters of the Farrell Corporation. That was purchased through eminent domain for a fair market value of 1.8 million dollars. And of course, it included more than just the space necessary to construct a police station. It constructed additional space, an entire floor for additional governmental use, and a vital public parking lot that right now is being utilized. And of course, there's no underestimating the value of those resources located very strategically downtown. The initial hope was to include everything within that core project cost of 12 million going into the renovation of this existing building. But as the city and the building committee progressed, it found of course, those expected additional costs to be challenging to reduce. For example, the cost of obtaining that 1.8 purchase price and rehabbing a much, much larger space, 22,000 square feet versus 65,000 square feet. The 22,000 was the initial expected size of the police station at Olson Drive. With that extra space and outfitting it for additional use, for example, community center, additional regional use, we needed access. And at the end of the day, there was no way around putting in an extra elevator that would provide exclusive access to the public floor versus the police floor. About a million dollars for the tower and that extra elevator. Additionally, there's included in what we're looking for here is the purchases, purchase of police equipment, updated police equipment that wasn't contemplated in that initial 12 million, that represents at least 400,000 of this request. So are these, there was initial additional costs that were anticipated, but at the same time, in working with the police building committee and the mayor's office, the recommendation from all experts was not to compromise the core project. We considered cutting design elements. There was a consideration of a phase in for the police station project to fit it in, but our experts, as you'll hear from later on, advised against pursuing those, those goals, that doing so would likely create extra delay, an extra expense, and also a compromise to really the core, the core mission of creating a premier police station for the city where it's needed most. And so at the, at the end of the day, you're looking at a sum, or projecting a sum of 3.1 million dollars more to be able not only to complete the police station, but to outfit the building for future governmental use, community use, to be able to provide access to the building, and to be able to go forward in the manner that we believe is the most beneficial to the City of Ansonia and the taxpayers. It's our belief that that price represents a great value for what we're getting, which is far more than a police station. And of course, it could be done in a responsible way, otherwise it wouldn't be put forward in this forum. We're going to hear a little bit more from the police building committee, but I also want our economic development director that sits on that committee and its monthly meetings to also talk a little bit to this part of the bonding initiative. Sheila?
Thank you, John, and thank you, everybody, for joining us on this Zoom meeting. I just want to say that when you, and you'll hear from our architects, but when you take a 65,000 square foot building and you put a roof on top of it, and you, and you outfit it with new windows and all the electrical, that's, that's quite a different story than outfitting a 22,000 square foot building. So this, this building, if you can imagine, if some of you have been in it and others have not, you can see from the outside, but it's an enormous building, and some things needed to be done in order to put the police station in that building. Some things needed to be done to the entire building to outfit it and ready, ready it for the police department. So that's what we're talking about, including talking about renovations for the second floor. And hopefully, you'll get additional information as we go, go along in the presentation.
Now, I'm also going to refer to the architects, Jakunski Yums. That firm has been advising the building committee as they've gone along, and they're by far a specialist and expert firm in designing public facilities, especially police stations, doing a number of these just in the last 10 years alone. But I'm going to continue our presentation by unmuting our Chief of Police, Andrew Coda. Can you hear us, Chief?
Yes, I can hear you, yes.
And I'm also going to unmute at this time, Paul Heon, who is the Chair of the Building Committee. And Paul, you, okay, Paul, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll let Chief and Paul, I'll leave it to you to advise a little more on what we're looking for here, why, and how this evolved during the meetings, the monthly meetings of the Police Building Commission.
Okay. Paul, would you like to go first? I'll start with you to let you give kind of some history because you've been involved in the project from the, the very beginning before I, I joined the committee after Chief Hale retired. Would that work best for you?
Okay. Paul muted himself.
I'm sure he was, he was having some audio problems.
Hey, Paul, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, you can kick things off.
Okay. Our, our committee actually formed in 2018, and our primary goal was to get the police department building operational up and running right from the get-go. During the referendum process, I know there were several open houses at the existing police department. And anyone who did attend that, those open houses saw the conditions at the current police department and saw a drastic need for a new facility for our police officers. And then the referendum came around, and that was overwhelmingly approved. And we said our mission was to get into a new police station for the officers. And thus, we went out to bid, and we did come back with Bantam, who is a reliable contractor. We did our research on those, and, and Bantam was also recommended by, by our architects, highly recommended by the architects. It was, the bids all came in somewhat higher than we anticipated originally. So we have done a lot to try and reduce spending on this new police project. The committee has worked long and hard hours to attempt to save the taxpayers money on the project. The actual police facility itself, I believe, at this point is going to come within the 12 million budget. And what I mean by that is there's a difference between hard costs and soft costs on a project. The hard costs are the actual building facility, site renovation, things of that nature. We, I believe we're certainly going to fall within that 12 million dollars for that to have our facility. Now, as far as soft costs, those are things that, that have to be taken care of. Those are communications, those are inspections, those are printing fees, telephone data systems, and so on and so forth. And I'm sure the architects will explain those things to you, but we have tried to hold the line item at 12 millions for the actual police building itself. And we, I think as of this date, we haven't even approached probably 5% of our contingency funds for the building. So we're doing quite well, and we are constantly trying to oversee the project to make certain that it comes within budget. I think that's about, less specific questions later on, but Chief, go ahead if you want to pick up from here.
I think Sheila also wanted to add something, Paul, briefly.
Yeah, I do, I do also want to add that we did have to deal with brownfields. It is a brownfield building. It's, it did have contamination. It does have some contamination, especially in the parking lot where the tower is, and those are added costs which you don't have with a new building, that you will see in some of these older manufacturing buildings or older office buildings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So going along with what Paul, Paul Heon had said, so we were tasked to complete this project. If anybody's aware, there's a, there's a top floor, there's a second floor, two parking garages. The main focus of this project has been the, the operational floor where the police department will operate out of for 95% of its capacities as, as we move through this project. So our task was to make sure that that floor was operational and within the budget that we were given when the Alderman last year approved the funding for the police department. We've continued to do that as part of the building committee, along with Paul Heon and some others. We have worked tirelessly, tirelessly to make sure that we were within, within the budget there. We've continued to do that. There are no extras. There's nothing that we've added to this project that wasn't proposed in the very beginning from the original diagrams, discussions, and proposals from the original building committee meeting. So we've done that. Some of these costs that Paul Heon was talking about were furniture costs, our radio costs, and other technology aspects. So what happens is that the main focus of any police department or emergency facility is communications. We did do an upgrade from the 2016 referendum at the current police department in anticipation of existing items that were falling out of disrepair, were out of warranty, could no longer be serviced properly. So there was an upgrade back in 2017 that the current police department at Two Elm did. Once we did that, those items would always be transferable over to any new facility that we were going to build, that we had any intentions if we've got the approval. That's come to fruition. We've been approved by the citizens in the city to build this facility at 65 Main Street. The next phase would be the actual transfer of the equipment that we have on scene at Two Elm Street over to the new building. That includes some of the upgraded equipment, but as we moved along, we found out that some of our repeaters and antennas and other behind-the-scenes radio equipment was nearly defunct. It was 15 to 20 years old, out of warranty, unable to be fixed. So we have worked with our current vendors and state contractors to make sure that we get the, the best pricing available to transfer our communications over. Without that, we would not have had the, the opportunity to even move into this building because our communications would not work. So that is a, an estimate, a cost that was not initially proposed in the budget. It was part of the early referendum that was not funded because at the time, we had not purchased the police department, so it was not funded. So that is part of what you're being asked to consider tonight. Another portion was the dispatcher council systems where the dispatchers physically sit as you replace aging radio and dispatch equipment. Those desks and chairs and setups do not work any longer for the new equipment that'll be coming in. So we've gotten state contract proposals for those items, and we are awaiting finalized quotes from, from all of the companies to, to go ahead and purchase these. So I will speak from the viewpoint of the Police Building Committee. Based on the money that was approved by the Board of Aldermen last year for this project, we are continuing to work on our budget and stay well within that budget. As far as purchase prices and cost of the building, I, I will not speak to that. I'll leave that to other people within the city, but this project is moving along. There are no extras. We, we've only put in what is, what is required. We, we've made every adjustment or, or concession that we could to keep our, our costs as low as possible so that we don't overrun this budget. Thank you.
Hey, John, could I also, I'll mention something?
Go ahead.
The members, little background, the committee itself is, is made of some good qualified people to make decisions regarding the, the new police building. We have law enforcement personnel. We also have a retired police chief who went through the, the, the police department building process in his own department. We have two members who, a family or themselves are in the construction business. We have the mayor's staff, including Sheila, and, and, and as a consultant, John Marini. We, we've also included members of the Aldermanic Board. We have the Superintendent of Public Works and the Chief of Police. So as you can see, it is a, a good board with a lot of experience. And, and if I could also add on to what Sheila was talking about, the, the building itself was quite large, certainly probably three times what the original plans of the building called for. And our goal here is to make the police building one of the safest and most secure buildings in the city, as it well should be. What we're, what we are, are planning ahead and for phasing in, what I like to call, we're, we were also looking at some shared resources to possibly include a, a regional dispatch center. We were also looking at a regional training room or facility, which could be utilized by fire department, EMS, or certainly people of the public safety community to use. Also, we're looking at a lot of the people involved in education of police officers certainly would look at, want to, using our facility, which would open it up for our officers to attend different training that would only enhance the professionalism of our department. We've also talked about a regional firing range. We started, the Chief and Chief Hale prior have started talking to other municipalities in which we've seen a lot of interest in the possibility of, of the shared resources. So we're looking at a lot of different things here than what was originally proposed, and, and we're going to continue to keep on top of it, and certainly for the benefit of our police officers and for the residents of Ansonia. Thanks.
Chief, anything further to add? I will say that we also looked at that floor for the senior center. I'm not sure, and, and we have.
I'm also going to bring in Jekunsky Yums, Sheila, and just looking on the list for...
I, I was just saying that we, John, that we also contemplated putting the senior center on the second floor as well, and wasn't going to be enough money for what we had allocated for the seniors to put them on that floor. It just didn't work, work out.
Just looking for Mr. Yums here.
Should be there. I was just unmuted.
Hey, Brian.
Oh, are you there, Brian? Oh, great. Perfect. Okay, so we wanted to bring you on to talk a little more about the technical side of things. As I was saying, Jakunski Yums is a firm with an amazing amount of experience designing these facilities. You know, you know what they should cost and what value to, to expect out of them. Wanted you to share a little bit of what went on since the project was conceived and you started working with really Chief Hale in the beginning, and then to Chief Coda, and of course, the same building commission the entire time.
Yes. Well, thank you. It's, it's my pleasure to be with you tonight and try to explain. As a matter of introduction, I'm Brian Yums, representing Jakunski Yums Architects, and we've been working with the City of Ansonia since 2016 on this project with Chief Hale, starting out with Chief Hale. And in 2016, the first thing that we were tasked to do was to determine what the needs of the police department are. It's a task that's typically your first stage and first steps in determining a new police facility. And when we were looking at Ansonia, we were concluding that the needs of the department for the next 20 years would be a facility of around 26, 24 to 26,000 square feet. As a point of reference, I've been planning police facilities for the last 30-plus years. I've designed and constructed over 90 police facilities throughout New England. So in Ansonia, when we, when we started in, in Ansonia, we were really taken aback by the conditions of the existing police facility. Where they were currently working versus what the needs of the city were and the needs of the department were, were really varied and really not in comparison to their existing facility, anywhere near the existing square footage that they were working out of. So with that, we were also tasked at looking at some sites over on Maple Street, and you, you mentioned Olson Drive, and the thought then was to build new. The referendum was undertaken at the time when Olson Drive was still under consideration. So if we were to look at the facility and the budget that we were proposing for Olson Drive, we were in the range of about 450 to 550 dollars per square foot. Now, that was 2016, 2017 dollars. The sites were not working for, for a number of reasons. Some of it was availability of the site from the Housing Authority. Some of it was sites were too small. Environmental issues were looked at, and, and those issues were, were brought to bear. And then the city came to us and proposed this facility at 65 Main Street. And when I looked at it, there were just so many positives about this site. One of the positives is, how can you get a downtown presence for your police department? And being on Main Street, you have an opportunity in Ansonia to provide a downtown presence for your police department. But in order to do that, you needed a, a property and a facility that would accommodate the police department and accommodate all of the vehicles associated with the police department without giving up downtown parking. The facility that we were looking at at 65 Main Street gave us two floors of parking deck where we could get staff and fleet vehicles and, and not make downtown parking a reduced number. We also had two floors of about 24,000 square feet per floor that could be renovated for the needs of the police department. So we knew going in, we had more square footage than we anticipated. We had parking. It was not impeding the downtown area, but we also had a downtown presence for your police department. What that does is it's not just a police facility project anymore. This becomes a downtown urban renewal project that will have more ramifications for downtown than just this building. So I think there's a lot of positives when we looked at the building. But now we had to consider, could we renovate this building and get the police department functioning in this building for 12 million dollars? Well, the 450 to 550 square foot price tag that we were looking for new construction is now coming in at about 240 dollars a square foot for what we're doing at 65 Main Street. So value, dollars to dollars, you're getting tremendous value at averaging about 240 dollars a square foot, where new construction right now is over 600 dollars a square foot for new construction in, in this region for municipal police facilities. We put this project out to bid, and while we can anticipate pricing, the bids actually give us market value. And we received nine bids. They were all pretty tight in their numbers, but they ranged from a low bid of 11,599 to a high bid of 13,767. So you can see the spread. Most of the bids that were received were in the 12.6 to 12.9 million dollar range. Banton Construction is under contract, and their original contract amount was 11,599. So we, we saw that we could complete the project as designed, and we also looked at what we, we had looked at what we needed to do to make this building functional. If we're renovating that existing building, we have to bring the entire building up to current building and fire codes. So with that building, we have over 60,000 square feet total size. We can't just say we only want to bring this section up to the current building codes. We have to bring the entire building up to current building and fire codes. So money has gone into that. If we're looking at window replacements, the windows that were in there were, were old, were inefficient. We can't just say we're going to just do some of the windows and then leave the others for later because that would just create more expense for the City of Ansonia. The most cost-effective and most efficient way of renovating this building is to renovate the entire building, some to a level for occupancy, but others to the level of code compliance. So the uppermost floor where the police department will be occupying will be So the uppermost floor where the police department will be occupying will be built out state of the art to satisfy the needs of the city of Ansonia Police Department. The floor below will be built out for code compliance, fire code compliance, future expansion needs, future regionalization potential, but it gives the city that asset to work from in the future within the 11,599 price tag that was bid from Banton. We also have a new stair tower because looking at the facility, the facility really did not have an identifiable entrance and the entrance that it did have was over on East Main Street, not Main Street. The parking lot that's there and to be utilized by the public didn't have access up and accessible way of getting to the facility and in the facility because the lower two floors were parking decks. So we have put vertical circulation, a new public identifiable entrance on the Main Street elevation. So we now have, again, talking about this overall police presence in your downtown region. But that vertical circulation includes stairs, elevators and an enclosure that added a million dollars to the project, but it's vital. It gets public into the building, it gets public to the occupied floors of the building and it gets the needed circulation for code compliance in and out of the building. So that was something that we've done, but that's also within the 11,599 price tag from Banton. Just to bring you up to current day. The contractor is performing quite well. There's been very little unexpected expenses. We are 24% through the construction project right now and at 24% complete, our change order total is under $40,000. So I think everything has been managed. The contractor has been very responsive. We've enjoyed our relationship with the city and with the building committee. Building officials and town officials have all been assisting in anything that we've asked to do to get this project done within the $12 million and I am very confident that the facility will get constructed within the $12 million appropriation and that's what Chairman Heon indicated. I am also confident that that will happen. Now, that's the hard costs. In addition to hard costs, the project has two other buckets of money that it still has to fund. One of them is soft costs and the other is a project contingency. We are only 24% of the way through the project. There will be other unforeseen items that come up, so a contingency fund is always prudent to handle any unforeseen expenses. The other bucket that I talked about was soft costs and Chairman Heon indicated on some of those soft costs, the chief indicated some soft costs for communications consoles. These were never included in the original allocation for the referendum. These were, these are items that the city needs to fund, including furniture, including moving. So we need to get the police department from their current facility, moved over to the new facility when it's completed and also provide some furniture for the spaces that are going to be occupied. So that's soft costs and I think that explains the three buckets, but the hard cost total will be within the $12 million that you had originally allocated for a project that had very little similarity other than it's going to occupy the police department, but it's gone from a new construction concept to an addition renovation concept.
Thank you very much, Brian. Thanks for being with us.
I'm here for questions if you need it.
So, and that may be the case as we move on to the Board of Aldermen section a little later tonight. So that about wraps up our initial explanation of the police station portion. Obviously, a big part of everything here is affordability and how this affects the finances and we'll get to that once we finish talking about all the projects. For right now, I'm going to move on to the road improvements and infrastructure and Sheila, can you hear me?
Yes, yep, I can hear you.
And just let me know if you'd like me to unmute anyone else during the conversation, but you could take it from here.
So I just want to point out that every year we get town aid road and we also get low SIP money for the paving of roads and infrastructure having to do with the roads. This year, the state is pretty late with getting that funding out and also we get about $200,000, between $200,000 and $300,000. And Rich, I know you're on the call, so you might be able to, you may be able to give me a more or give us a more accurate number. Having said that, you know, that doesn't, that doesn't get you a lot in terms of road improvements, in terms of infrastructure improvements. So we, the thought process is to allow for some road work to be done for some infrastructure pipes, water pollution control, some of that stuff that needs to be done, sidewalks. The mayor, mayor is always looking to improve the infrastructure and since that hasn't been done in past years, he's had a very aggressive campaign of improving roads throughout the city and he wants to continue that, that program and he wants to be able to make sure he's covering enough roads and infrastructure for all of our residents. So that's part of the genesis for the 1.5 million in infrastructure and road improvements. Sorry, I see you're moving on, you're moving me on.
Did you have a little more to say about the?
No, I think that's it. I mean, a million dollars will, would probably pave about 20 streets, just to give you an example, if they were one mile streets. So you don't, you don't get a lot, but we think, we think that will be sufficient for this year coming up.
Okay, so for the next segment for the firefighter improvements, I'm also going to unmute Alderman Joseph Yalman, who also is on the fire commission.
Thanks, John. I know.
Yes, great.
Thank you. And Dr. Schuer as well, if you don't mind, because he's also on the commission, but uh.
Yep.
Thank you. These are the discussions, I mean, this 300,000 number came from a lot of, there were points taken from Chief Tremblay's capital plan and discussions with the fire commission overall and the chiefs and some of these numbers go to, it's about 175,000 for building maintenance, which includes the floors at four of the five houses, as that's been mentioned many, many times at the fire commission. There's about $75,000 allocated for communications and technology and equipment and then there's the remainder for vehicles, maintenance and possible upgrades. So that kind of explains the 300,000. We're working off the capital plan from Chief Tremblay and working with the current chief, just trying to take those numbers and move it forward, so we included that. Or President Schuer?
I was just going to add, so I'm the chair of the fire commission and Joe is the vice chair and we're members of that fire commission, which is comprised of the chief and all the assistant chiefs. So we are working with them actively to modernize that existing five-year capital plan and try to meet the needs and the items that continually come up in the monthly fire commission meetings, we're trying to address with this request. That's about it.
Great, thank you. So moving on to the final part, the recreational study, which is something I know we've talked about for some time, this is making its first appearance. Sheila?
Hi, thank you. So $100,000 for the recreational study evolved because we heard from various groups, softball, soccer, football, basketball. We heard that there's a need for additional fields, that there's a need to fix fields that we aren't utilizing. There's a, there's a demand for soccer fields, for example, and less, and less of a demand for other areas. So we're trying to, I don't believe the city has ever done a recreational study and I think, you know, when you talk about a study, you're talking about getting a good sense of what, what we have in the city and what, how many, how many participants we have for each sport, who's utilizing what fields, what are the repairs and renovations that need to be made instead of just, you know, fixing a field if someone, if someone says, oh, there's a problem here or fixing it randomly. At least have a plan and outline a needs assessment that will determine how, how many people are utilizing a field, how many softball fields do we need, how many soccer fields do we need? Give us a good sense of all of that and of course, a study always, even though people don't like to hear it, a study always helps us secure grant funds because I have something backing me up, not just saying, oh, I guess we need, you know, $500,000 to fix a few fields. Now I've, now I've got a real true needs assessment, here's what we need, here's how much we think it'll cost. It's a, it's a guideline, it's a good playbook to have, no pun intended. So that's, that's what that, it came out of a lot of discussions with the Board of Aldermen about recreational fields and can we get grants and so forth? And, and yes, there are some grants out there that will provide some funding, but without state discretionary funding for a large recreation project, there aren't very many competitive grants out there and certainly there is not a lot of money out there without something to back up your request. So that is where that came from. And I can answer questions as we go along or at the end when, I'm sure people have plenty of questions. A lot of times, many of the grants that we secure have require engineering reports, require, you know, professional studies and reports that, that can back up, again, back up the numbers that you're talking about. So you say you need 500,000 or whatever the number is, what, why, why are you saying that? What's the, what's the justification for that? And that's, that's what that is trying to address.
Okay, great. All right, thank you Sheila. So we're going to move on to impact on finances. We talked a bit about the need for the projects, in particular, the police station taking up the majority here, 3.1. Again, we feel very strongly that it's more than a police station, it's a major investment in the downtown area and given the value, given what you're getting, it's a fair amount. And Sheila's also talked about, and so has Alderman Yalman and President Schuer, talked about additional investments into our community and into our infrastructure. But of course, the most important consideration here is whether or not we could afford it. And it's the city's position that given our current debt position and given the current interest rate, that borrowing is possible and that it's possible to be neutral in terms of budgetary impact. And we want to bring our experts into the conversation. Barry Benabi, who's our, the city's financial advisor, I'm going to unmute now. I'm just looking for our bond counsel, Joseph Fazi, just trying to see what number he's under. Apologize.
I can send it to you, John.
Just give me the last four digits, I could get him unmuted.
9859.
What's that? Okay, thanks.
Okay. Standby, that's a sell, so hold on.
Would you like me to sing a song while waiting?
Wonderful.
That's putting a lot of pressure on me to find this number very quickly.
Barry, can you hear us?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Sure. While we get Fazi on the line, we could start with your perspective and of course, you're the city's financial advisor. We've worked with you for some time, make, by way of introduction to our group here tonight, would you like to share some perspective about where the city stands in terms of finances and its ability to borrow specifically to proceed with this borrowing initiative?
Sure. Well, the city has a rating of AA minus, so it's in the AA category, which is a strong rating, which is a positive and the city would be able to take advantage of one of the few positives in the current environment, which is a very low borrowing costs. Interest rates are historically low levels. So that in conjunction with the city's existing debt service, which is amortizing relatively aggressively. In fact, if the city were to never borrow again, your debt service would drop off each year. So any new debt would be mitigated by the, by the runoff in the, in the existing debt. So basically have a couple of things, you have aggressive amortization of your existing debt, you have a strong bond rating, the AA minus from Standard and Poor's and we're in an environment of historically low interest rates. So those three factors together would allow for future borrowing of, on a moderate basis. And I did send a spreadsheet to you, John and Sheila, I'm not sure if that's something you passed on to everybody else.
We can make that available to the board.
I'm not sure, did you want me to get into details of that, John, or just kind of keep it in?
Sure.
So, it's my understanding, there's approximately $8 million left of the original authorization that the city's looking to issue in the, in the near term and then with the potential for an additional $5 million of new capital projects. We prepared a debt analysis that takes into consideration the city's existing debt plus the already authorized but not yet issued $8 million plus a proposed new authorization of $5 million. And we add all those together with the current interest rates and the city's existing runoff and debt service and, and you know, basically what it shows is that there's, there'd only be two years where debt service would increase. It'd increase in fiscal '23 by about $370,000 and then in fiscal '24 by about $127,000 based on the assumptions that we used in the analysis. Then each year after that, that service would decrease. So there's two years there where debt service would increase, but one factor that our analysis did not include is, it's a bit tricky when, when a municipality issues municipal bonds, what they typically get was called a bond premium. That means they get more money than they originally borrowed because that's the way the underwriters bid it. I think last time the city issued bonds, the premium they received was about $300,000 and that premium can and should be used to mitigate future debt service. So if, if that trend continues for future bond issues, I think there's a good chance that, that those two years where debt service increases could be mostly completely mitigated by those proposed bond premiums.
And I have Attorney Fazi also on the line, I'm going to bring him into the conversation. And we've worked with Attorney Fazi along with him for our past bond issuances. Attorney Fazi, can you hear us?
I sure can.
So we're talking about the impact on finances and Barry has described for us the position the city is in to take on new borrowing. Is there anything you could add to shed light on the ability of the city to borrow or what the impact on finances would be?
You know, I think that's really Barry's purview and he put together a very nice spreadsheet here, I think he. And he put together a very nice spreadsheet here. I think he described it very well. And I really don't have anything to add to that. I think he really hit the nail on the head.
In terms of mechanisms and timing, can you describe for the group, you know, what, you know, what is typically done, you know, what, what the process is? Obviously, the hearing tonight is a prerequisite to any borrowing.
Sure. So what we have to do for the City of Ansonia to authorize debt is to hold this public hearing. Then to have the Board of Aldermen approve the bond resolutions or not, as they see fit. And the same with the vote. And, and the Board of Aldermen would also schedule a referendum for a vote to be held and to give the voters the chance to weigh in on whether the projects are something that they support or not.
And this is, of course, the same process that we utilized in the prior bond issuance?
Yes.
Anything else you'd like to add for information tonight on the proposal?
No, I, I, I think that's about it, really. You know, you have the process laid out and if you decide to move forward with it, we have a schedule that we can follow, including a referendum resolution to state the questions and to put them on the ballot. And the referendum would be June 2nd. There's some flexibility in the referendum resolution that gives the mayor, if it's in the best interest of the city, to move the date to another time, if that's deemed to be the best thing to do, time or day. And I think that's about the process. The city has been through this in the past.
Excellent. Thank you, Attorney Fazi.
You're welcome.
So we're at the end of our main presentation. And I will say this, the process began prior to the June presidential primary being moved. And it was essentially being explored that if, the soonest date possible may have been in June, if the referendum were held simultaneous with the presidential primaries. Of course, given the health concerns of the COVID situation, and of course, the state agreeing with that as well, you saw that they moved the date of the primary into August. I, in consulting with staff, there is no intention to go forward with a June referendum date. It doesn't seem the health situation would, would make that advisable in the least bit. At the same time, once we realized that the situation was going to progress well past June and the, and the primary was moved, we didn't want to cause confusion or delay by stopping this hearing process. We figured that it would be in everyone's interest to have the conversation sooner than later, even if it meant that the referendum was not going to happen in June. So for anyone concerned about the possibility of jumping quickly to a referendum, that is not something the city, the mayor, or our team here would recommend. To repeat, you know, we do not want a June primary, a referendum, rather. In terms of how to do this safely, of course, there are avenues that would open up in the future for voting. And there's been a number of executive orders from the governor that may pave the way to alternate ways to do this. But again, we figured it was the best step forward to have the discussion, to put these proposals in front of the voters, in front of the officials, and to kick off the first official part of the process, so we wouldn't lose any time, given everything that's going on around us. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to move on to our public hearing portion. And I have Dr. Schur unmuted. Josh, can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you, John.
Okay. So in terms of how we're going to coordinate the public hearing, it's a, normally you just get up and speak, but this is a little bit different for everybody. There is an option that you have if you're using your Zoom, the Zoom platform and your Zoom software to raise a digital hand, to raise your hand. And I'll be able to see that from the list. So that's one way you could indicate that you'd like to speak during the public hearing. Additionally, you could send a chat message. And I see the chat, the chat forum has been a little active, but I need individuals to specifically state that they'd like to talk, so I could figure out what number you're at, who you are, and allow you to address. And of course, you could also send a text message. And this is in particular, if you're listening on phone and you're not using the Zoom software. You won't be able to use the hand. You won't be able to use the chat room. But you could text this number, 203-751-2854. That's 203-751-2854. And I will do my best to, to be able to respond to that chat, find your number and allow you to speak. Now, we have the mayor, the mayor on the line, Mayor Cassetti, and he would like to end the presentation by briefly addressing you. Let me just unmute him. Mayor?
Yes. Good, good evening, everyone. Thanks. Thank you for participating in this bond hearing. You know, this is very important that we move this police station forward and get it opened as soon as possible. So I'm hoping that the Board of Aldermen looks favorably on it. The, the bond money for the roads. I, when I took office in 2013, our roads were dilapidated. Since I took office, we, I have paved over 70 roads. There's 220 roads in Ansonia, so that's over one third. I'm hoping in the next 10 years to pave the entire rest of the city's roads that, that need it. Also, on the west side of town, we have a lot of dilapidated sidewalks. That's a, that's a part of town that's been neglected for many decades. We have many drainage problems on the west side, Crooked S Hill, Grove Street, that need attention. So I'm asking you to please look favorably on, on that bond. So thank you all for participating.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And now we're going to try to start the public hearing portion. Everything is being recorded for the record. It will also be transcribed as normally a public hearing would. Just as in a physical public hearing, when you begin to speak, please state your name and your address for the record. And again, you could either raise your digital hand. You could send a chat message, and I'm going to be scanning that message board after I take the hands. And then I'm going to be going to the text messages for those by phone. Obviously, we, we asked that everyone give their, their fellow residents and taxpayers an opportunity to speak. And I will start things off. I do see one hand raised, Alderman Genetti. Hey, Joe? Alderman Genetti?
Hi, John. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. How are you? First of all, I, I don't want anyone to think I'm against this. This is a wonderful thing. I'm, I'm a little curious on a few matters. First of all, a primary is a democratic primary. It's not a two-party thing. So how can you have, what do you call it, a, and that date? Also, regionalizing a gun firing range and dispatch. Are there any other cities that are going to chip in any money for this, if they're going to regionalize it? And also, I thought in the original plans, there were two elevators from the beginning and furniture. I just want to know what, what's going on with all that, and maybe I misunderstood. Like I say, I don't know if you can have a referendum on a day where it's a one-party, what do you call it? Primary. So that's something we got to look into.
Okay, Alderman Genetti, we're going to save answering questions for the Board of Aldermen segment. And of course, you're going to be right there with us on the Board of Aldermen. Anything else for the record?
Oh, no. We'll, we'll get these answers, though, to the public later on.
Yeah, just like in a normal public hearing, a question and answer. But definitely preserve for the record, anything at all that you'd like to put out there.
Oh, yeah, I guess that, that, that's about it. I just, like I say, the, the two elevators, I thought that was in from the beginning. I believe we were talking about that when I was in Alderman in 16, when we were buying the building and everything. And also the furniture and the dispatching equipment. I, I was understood that the stuff they have now was outdated and they were going to have to put new stuff in anyways. And then I heard, I thought we talked about using the old police station as a fire department training building. That's another thing I was, I was wondering about. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Genetti. Okay, do I have any other participants for the hearing? You can, I'm going to go to digital hands first. So I'm just scanning to see in the participant list if you could raise your digital hand. I think I see Joe again. No. And what you need to do is if you go, if you see the window of participants, I see someone. Okay, sir? State your name and address for the record.
Dustin Farmer, 231 Butler Street, Hampton, Connecticut.
Thanks.
Can't hear.
Let me say it again. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah. I guess my question, so this is the bond hearing for the station or for the roads?
This is all four items.
All four items. Great. I guess my question is, what are the other towns that are joining in these potential regional efforts?
So will, will no any questions in the public hearing for the Board of Aldermen meeting? And really, any consideration going forward? Everything you say here is part of the transcript, but it's not, the public hearing isn't exactly designed to be a Q and A. So I would say preserve for the record any concerns and any questions that you want answered. And all the city officials will have a record of your questions, concerns, comments, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns, anything at all, statements? Brian? Okay, Brian?
Brian Sorix, 17 Elaine Drive, Ansonia, Connecticut. I am wondering why the vote, the referendum cannot take place during the general election when you would have higher turnout. Instead, you're choosing for the primary election, which the two parties have already chosen their candidates. Therefore, the turnout will be incredibly low. It makes no sense to me.
Duly noted. Any other items for the record? Okay, I'm going to go to DB. State your name and, uh, address for the record.
Dana Breton, 25 Nolan Road, Ansonia, Connecticut. I'm just wondering, because we're talking about, you know, the town spending money, what is the fund balance today? Is that something that we can discuss or get on record? Especially when we're talking about projects that might not have end caps on them. You know, we're looking at, you know, the police station where they've projected a certain amount being spent, but they don't know what's going to totally be spent, and we're not even talking about all the floors. Could we get something on record?
So we have, again, the Alderman meeting right after this, and we do have our financial advisors and also our Bridget Bishara and Kim DiStefano, the city comptroller and assistant comptroller. So we can certainly look into that. And again, we do have your comments and questions for the record. And duly noted, that speaks to the financial part of this. It's very important. Anything else for the record?
John, this is Josh.
Yep.
If, if you don't see digital hands up, I would ask that, as I mentioned, that, that, you know, don't end the meeting without opening it up to everybody in case there's people calling in, you know, that don't, that don't have the ability to text or whatever.
We're going to try at the very end to do that. I do have some more digital hands here. I have Lisa, who I'm going to unmute, and name and address for the record.
Lisa Glazer, 56 Hoenske Way. I, I just had a question about the study that we're doing for the recreation department. So there, what, what is their intent? Is it to find the fields that need to be fixed and fix them? I mean, is the study so that we can figure out what we should do as, as far as prioritizing?
So again, those questions will be preserved for the Alderman to discuss.
Well, I'm, I'm just asking because we're, we're taking, you're asking for $100,000. But we're, we're going to spend that money to study which fields presumably. I'm going to assume that. So we're going to do that. But then, when it comes to the roads, we're going to let the mayor at his discretion decide which, which roads get done first? I mean, why, why don't we have a study of which roads? I mean, that to me makes a hell of a lot more sense. It's just my opinion.
Yep, duly noted.
Well, that's it.
Thank you. Okay, and Leslie? Leslie, can you hear me?
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Sure. Name and address for the record.
Yes, it's Leslie Navarre, and I live on 98 Beaver Street. I want to, I'm here to express my serious concerns over the city trying to borrow more money while families and businesses in Ansonia are struggling to keep the lights on. I mean, recently, the city just approved three tax deferments, including the WPCA payments and that, acknowledging that this is not a good time for taxpayers and businesses and that taxpayers are cash-strapped, right? And that the revenue is not coming in. So now we're hearing that the mayor is proposing to borrow a total of $5 million. That's, that's from my basic math. And that's not including the debt that we're currently, that we currently have, and none of us really know what it is either. So that would be great to, to know that, to have that, that information. But on top of that, the mayor still hasn't presented a budget. We still don't know what tax increases and cuts he's going to propose on residents. So we have no idea of the real financial impact that this borrowing will have on the city, on our bond rate, our wallets. While I understand that we did have a financial person and told us, he gave us a general overview to have numbers, to really see it on paper, to have the ability to ask questions, that would really give us a better insight of how sound this, it is to borrow. There's so many questions about exact use, reason, and the need, especially the need for the projects being bonded and how the city plans to pay off this borrowed money on top of the current debt, which is unknown. It still wasn't really answered in, in the presentation. Well, it was a good presentation. Thank you, guys. And questions on what we're going to have to give up and pay more of in order to not go broke and go red in long-term? Like, what is the five-year plan? I'm doing all the payments. Is, you know, it's something really important to do strategic budgeting. We don't want to be the next Detroit in this small city. So if, I would like these questions to go, the following questions to, to go on record, knowing that you guys aren't answering them, and possibly consider doing a Q and A for residents. Again, for the same reason, a Q and A will help residents, questions to be answered and have that dialogue and really know what they're getting themselves into. It's just prudence and, and just full transparency if we do it that way. So the following questions I do have are, how did they, how did we reach the borrowing amount for this study? Do we know who's going to do the study and how long the study is going to take? What does the money have to be, when does the money have to be paid back for all the projects? And what's the anticipated interest rate in the past five years? How were other reports and studies paid for? And what departments oversaw the execution of those reports and studies? And what was done with those studies? Why can't the Planning and Zoning Commission undertake the park and recreational study as it's under its prevy? There's a plan, I think it's like Plan of Conservation or some sort, that does cover the planning, the park and recreation and open spaces. Why can that, why can't they take that on? And they just recently did one in 2018, so they can, and it's, it's state mandated. So another question is, under Connecticut General Statute, Section 824, it requ- So another question is, under Connecticut General Statute, Section 824, it requires municipal, any municipal improvement to, to municipal-owned property such as streets, bridges, parks and buildings, be referred to the zoning and planning commission for review and recommendations and approval. Why doesn't the resolution for road improvements align with the statute, but instead gives the mayor the full discretion? It's a little weird. It gets, it's too much for the executive branch, in my, my opinion. Another one is, what is the current way that the city budgets for the road improvements? I'm hearing in the past, you guys used to do a five-year plan. Is that still happening? Or what, you know? It would be good to know what's the current way that you guys budget for the road improvements. And what are the 20 road improvements that, that Ms. O'Miley was talking about? Have they been identified? Will they, and will they all get funding? Or are there other projects in mind? It would be nice to have like an actual priority list for public, the public to see. So we could, again, make a conscious and good vote. What does the city need to bond road improvements, like paving and curving? When we, but when, like I said, in the past, we used to budget, we budgeted for it. And I asked a couple towns, surrounding towns, Hamden, for example, Seymour. They budget for the, for those things. So what, what is, why can't we continue doing it the way that we're doing it? How old are the firefighting and rescue vehicles? Why, what, when were they last replaced? What is their current conditions? In their maintenance, when they were last maintenance? And how much do we owe from the last time we ever replaced them? And so those are some of the questions that I have. And finally, I just wanna say, like, I understand, I think all of us understand the need, the, the night, it would be nice to do this, right? It would be nice to, 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 to bond all these items sooner than later. But I don't still see from the projects that you guys, the, the presentation, I don't see the justifiable reasons to add more debt on families of Ansonia. And put further debt when we have a rainy fund that we need to rebuild, especially because of what's happening. Again, it was quoted that we are, you know, you guys did acknowledge we are in hard times. Revenue is not coming in, is not gonna come in as it was. And current bills need to be paid. So we have to prioritize really what is important and what's gonna keep our, our city functioning. And, and, and give the support that our taxpayers really need during this great financial uncertainty. So thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you. And of course, all of those questions will be preserved for the record, both on video and in transcript. And that'll be available for the public and of course, the city officials, who may of course have questions of their own when we get into the Board of Alderman meeting. I'm going to go to Alderman Raslin. Alderman Raslin?
Hi, thank you. Tarek Raslin, 76 Garden Street. Ansonia. I, I just wanna give every, everybody from the public the opportunity to speak first, but would like to address in the public hearing before we close out. So if there's anybody else that would like to speak first, I wanna give them priority.
And I, there, there are no other hands up right now. I see Brian's hands is up. He did speak previously.
Okay, so I'll, okay, I'd like to thank, it looks like we've got about 91 participants on the call. And so I would like to thank all the members of the public for joining. I'd like to state for the record that I do, I would like to second the request that there is an opportunity for residents to, to participate in a question and answer session directly. It's nice for the Board of Aldermen to be able to have the courtesy of that. I think it should be extended to the residents as well, especially on an issue as important as this. We're talking about 5 million. And borrowing, that's nearly 15% of what we collect in tax revenue in a given year. So it's no small matter. I would also like to point out, I'm disappointed, just in general, and we'll get into it more in the Board of Alderman meeting. But the way this process has been carried out, I was hoping coming into this meeting that there was going to be information that was new. And that would give me some ease in terms of the requests and the resolutions that are being proposed here. Unfortunately, I feel like I've ended this meeting very frustrated, because I don't hear any new information. And the, the the facts and figures that were being presented to, to us today, specifically with regard to the police station request. When, you know, my understanding is that there should have been due diligence done in the beginning of, when we moved to acquire this building, it was available to us. All of the conditions that were known in the building should have been available to us. I was hoping to hear today that we had a $3 million change order because of some unforeseen circumstances, but we're being told that there's a $40,000 change order. So when did we, when, when did we find out that we were going to require the public to approve another $3 million? It sounds like we probably knew that quite a long time ago, and I'm looking forward to hearing that answer. And the process, it's inconsiderate to residents, it's inconsiderate to the Board of Aldermen. That this, the first that we hear of this is through a public notice through a newspaper. And that we have not been consulted in advance of a public hearing to be able to discuss this as a board and to be able to go out to residents and to discuss it with residents in advance of a public hearing, so they can have more informed questions for the board. It's, it's very disappointing. And so I'm gonna end it there, and we'll, we'll continue in, in the Alderman meeting.
Thank you, Alderman Raslin. I do see two individuals who did speak previously. I just have several individuals who have not got an opportunity to speak. This is unmute either Chris or Nina Phipps. Can you hear me?
Thanks, John. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, it's Nina Phipps, 60 Rockwood Avenue. A couple comments. First of all, kind of to tag on to what Tarek just said about the notice of the public hearing. While it was in the paper appropriately, I think going forward, it should be a precedent to post it on the city website. So that folks can see that and then put it out on social media so that folks know about it. Not everyone buys newspapers, not everyone is online. So you need a combination of both to get the notice out to everyone. So I think that should be something that should, should be done going forward in order to make sure we reach as many people as possible. Comments, the police station, obviously, we need it, we need it badly. And I guess I shouldn't say we, I should say the, the folks who work there. But my question is, you've been working on this plan since 2016, 2017. You've known about this building since around that time. Why now is suddenly the 3 million needed? Why not a year ago, or 18 months ago, or even six months ago? Why suddenly now? As far as the roads go, my question slash comment is, how are we guaranteed that these, this money will go to the roads that the citizens use in town? Specifically First Ward, North End. But how are we guaranteed that this over a million dollars will not be used for the Route 8 access road that seems to be a, a big thing that the mayor wants? And I'm not saying it's not a bad thing, but I just am hoping that this is not, that this will actually go to the roads for the citizens and not to this Route 8 access road that has been discussed over recent months. For the athletic facilities, and this is my last comment. Within this study, will the citizens actually be surveyed and asked all these questions of what's needed, what they want, what's used, what's not? Versus just going off of the feedback that you've already received from some folks so far? I think there's probably a lot more people out there that would reply to a survey versus the folks that have come to you directly. Thank you.
Did we lose our host?
I'm not sure. We probably lost the audio connection. John?
Can you hear me?
Yep, now we can.
Okay, sorry. I was just saying a, a thank you to Nina Phipps. Of course, all the comments are being preserved for the record. I was also saying that in the chat, if you've left a question or comment in the chat, but you don't necessarily want to speak and address the hearing, we will be copying the chat, so that any questions there will be preserved for the record and given to the Alderman. And they will have that as part of the public record as well from this hearing. So recorded, transcribed, and any questions in the chat. I see two individuals who have spoken before. I do wanna give an opportunity to anybody who hasn't already spoken. And I'm checking my, the cell as well, and I don't see any requests to speak. I'm going to go back to Brian, who has his hand up. Brian, could you hear me? Can you hear me?
Do I have to restate my name?
I guess so, just for the sake of the record.
All right, Brian Sorak, 17 Lane Drive, Ansonia. I just wanted to ask, with the Police Building Commission, are there, where are the minutes and where can we access those? I want to see the discussions that came, that led to this request for a referendum. I noticed on the minutes, the Board of Minutes, the Board Minutes and Schedule site, the Police Building Commission is not an option there. I just wanted to see the transparency in that, and I just wanted to put that in the record.
Noted. Okay, thank you. Any other, anyone else have a question by show of hands? I'm also looking in the chat. I don't see any requests to speak. Josh, can you hear me?
Yes.
So have you gotten any requests, any additional requests directly to speak tonight?
I have not. I've been looking too. But I, I can't see as much as you can. That's why I have you running this.
So I cannot see any additional ones. We could put, do the unmute at this point and ask if anyone, you know, the goal here is if you're on telephone and you haven't been able to text or send a chat message or raise your digital hand and you just wanna be able to address, we don't wanna leave you hanging there. We want you to be able to speak. I can go forward and do a, a general unmute, and if you'd like to speak, please just speak out and state your name and address, and hopefully we could deal with this in a organized way. President Schur, ready?
Yes. Would like to address the bond hearing? Any specific individuals?
One question.
You would just state your name and address.
Mute everybody else.
I can't hear them.
I attempted that, but it didn't seem to work. If we can't identify a single person, it's, it's extremely difficult to mute everybody else with 90 individuals on the line. I'm just gonna bring Alderman Short back. President Short, can you hear me?
Yes.
I see one other speaker who's raised their hand in the meantime. Hold on. Beverly?
Hi, good evening. Just a quick question, listening to all this. Where do we go if this referendum is not passed? You know, what is our, what is our, our plan, or do we have one if the referendum is not passed?
So question, if we don't proceed with the initiative, what happens?
Well, if you proceed with the initiative and if it's not, if it's not passed by the residents, where do we go? Especially with the police station, where the police station's concerned.
Noted. Oh, and also state your name and record, just for the sake of the transcript.
Okay, Beverly Tidmarsh, 77 West Field Avenue.
Thank you. Okay. All right, Dr. Short, any, any other?
I'm not seeing anything. You wanna try it one more time, just undo it and see, see if you get in and then call it a... I don't see any, anybody, but...
So we're just gonna get fair notice because of the format here. This is your last chance to be, address this particular hearing. And again, I'm making sure that we make a copy of all of the messages in the chat to preserve that as well. Things are still being recorded. Okay, and I'll try one more time. And what I'll do is I'll unmute, and if you're really struggling, you really wanna be heard, just really name and address for the record.
That everyone else can...
Can you hear me? Name and address? One more time, name and address. Okay, so I think we are concluded with our public hearing for tonight. We are going to move into the Board of Alderman meeting, which is of course a public meeting. So everyone could, of course, stay on the line, stay on Zoom. I'm going to move to transfer the meeting over to President Schur. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm gonna transfer the host chip over to you.
Let the adventure begin. If I could.
Okay. We're all set? All set. Okay, so welcome everyone to the Board of Alderman special meeting. And I'd like to start with a roll call. Trish, are you, is she unmuted? She's not. So we're gonna have to go through and unmute.
This is just like being in person, right?
And Josh, you should be able to unmute each of the Aldermen.
Okay, so I just, let's see. Okay, Trish is unmuted. I'm going to go through the Aldermen here.
I'm unmuted, see? Yeah, if it's muted, they'll have that on there, see?
If you're an Alderman and you still have the little red thing by you, let me know. Because that means you're not. Whoever's doing that, stop.
There are any others? How about the town clerk?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready?
Looks like Terrick's still muted.
Yes, he is.
There you go.
Mr. Farmer's still on?
No.
I don't see all the Aldermen. My screen is, is on.
Now, if any of the Aldermen called in, I won't know because the number's not identified.
Are you ready for a roll call?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, roll call.
All right, Alderman King. Alderman Stowe.
Here.
Alderman Phipps.
Here.
Alderman Raslin.
Here.
Alderman Cassetti.
Here.
Alderman Genetti.
Here.
Alderman Spigarola. Alderman, Alderwoman Stroman.
Here.
Alderman Yalman.
Here.
Alderman Rivers.
Here.
Alderman Mamon. Alderman Schur.
Here.
Alderman Blackwell. Alderman DeLibro. You've got 10 present and four apt.
Okay, I declare a quorum. I'd like to start with a pledge. We'll see how this goes. Name for the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
Seeing better.
They can hear you now.
Not, not the, not the best pledge I've ever seen, but, all right. So the, so the purpose of this meeting is, is to consider the four items that we just discussed. Actually, I just lost my paper here. But briefly, we had the, the police issue, fire, roads, and rec to simplify. With the four items, we, we can act on those. Although I've stated to the Aldermen, my preference is to not do anything as far as voting tonight, as this is fresh, this is the first step. I'll take any blame that, you know, as far as the rollout goes, you know, you have to start somewhere, you have to get the information out there. And once, now that it's out there, these are drafts and, you know, we can go from there. So there was a lot of material to digest, there was a lot more questions than I, than, I mean, I expected a lot of questions, but there were even more than I expected. And so we can start with, open with anyone that wants to comment on any of them.
Hey, Josh, it's, it's Tony, if you will.
What's that?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I, I think in light of the information that we received tonight from the presentation, there were an assortment of questions, I think, that were asked. There were a lot of open items that I, I think we need some, some additional information on. So we're not having a vote tonight, and I think it best serves, I, I think, all of us, the public, everybody's interests to track down some of the, some of the answers, I guess, that the residents, as well as the Aldermen are looking for. And potentially to put this on the May Board of Aldermen meeting as an agenda item to review the, the, the questions and the open items that folks have. There, there was a lot of information shared tonight. There were, I'm, I'm watching the chat and there was an assortment of good questions, I think, you know, some of the which I, I had myself. I, I think it needs some more discussion. And, and I think in the absence of a vote tonight, I think, I think it's in the best interest of all of us to move this to the May Board of Aldermen meeting, track down some of these answers in the meanwhile from, you know, the, the city officials, the project, the committee, all these folks that are in scope for this project, to get the residents and get the Aldermen some answers we're looking for. So I'd like to make that motion to move this to the May agenda item with all of the, covering all of the questions that we've asked tonight.